Good to see you, good to see you, good, good. Okay, everybody, good evening. My name is Malcolm Gorge. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. I'm going to call this meeting to order at six P M. This is a very special meeting this evening, so I'd like to welcome you all here who've attended in person. We are also joined by members of the Town Council. We have members from the Board of Architectural Review that are in attendance or are tuning in online, and also the Board of Architectural Review. So, welcome to one and all. We have a very interesting agenda this evening, which we'll get to shortly, but first of all, a point of privilege as Chair, I'd like to welcome Nikki Schaffner to the Commission. This is Nikki's first meeting with the Planning Commission, but I understand you've been involved with, as a committee work for the town, so you're no stranger to these proceedings, but welcome. So, Mr. Wilson, could you proceed with the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Malcolm Gorge.
Here.
Travis Smith. Nikki Schaffner.
Here.
Marcus Taylor. Ken Coleman.
Here.
Jamal Mosley.
Here.
Bill Tomes.
Here.
Thank you. And can you confirm the notification and posting of the agenda in accordance with state law?
Yes, it was posted.
Thank you. So, following that, could you join me with the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You can sit by me if you like. Thank you. So, the next item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which amazingly goes back to March the fourth. So, hopefully you've had a chance to review those minutes in your packet. I'll give everyone a minute to just refresh their memories, otherwise entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I have a second. Any further comments or discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved and may be entered into the record. So, the big item, the big ticket item tonight is the presentation from Kendic East Collaborative on the status and progress of the town zoning update. So, Mr. Stein, I'll leave that to you. Set it up.
Thank you, Malcolm. So, give a little background on what we're going to be doing here. So, we have Brian Mayberry, who is with Kended Keith Collaborative. The town contracted them last year. It was prior to my time, but it was about in February of last year, and we've been working on the land development ordinance from that point up until our current status. And it's been going through staff review. It's been with some of our boards and commissions, our Board of Architectural Review, Board of Zoning Appeals. A lot started on this last year. And tonight is going to be an up-to-speed collaborative update for all the boards and commissions and the public as we get ready to launch the public view side of it that's going to be hung on our website. So, I'm going to turn it over to Brian and let him introduce himself. He's here on Zoom. Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for letting me virtually update you on where we're at on this project, the Land Development Ordinance, or L D O. Again, Brian Mayberry with Kended Keith Collaborative. I've been, as Daniel said, working with him and getting this to where it is today. And I think we are close to having sort of a more publicly reviewable draft. And wanted to keep in mind for everyone that this is indeed a draft until it's adopted. And then even after it's adopted, it's amendable if it goes through the, you know, public process that a L D O has to go through in order to be amended. So, nothing is definitely set in stone at this time. And so, I just wanted to make sure that was understood for everybody in the room. To discuss how this document is organized, and I have a few slides that are, that give you some background and some kind of educational material on what an L D O is and can and can't do, just to be sure that, you know, we're all on the same page as far as what this document can accomplish. The L D O draft is organized sort of in the manner that you see on the screen, with sort of front-loaded with information that a casual user would want to see upfront, someone who's a layperson, not an attorney, like a land, you know, an applicant's attorney or an architect or engineer, but someone who maybe just wants to see where they can put their shed or where, how they can build on to their business or something like that. So, what the front part of the L D O is organized so that, you know, the zoning districts are upfront. What is the district that, that the property is located in? What kind of building types or land uses are allowed in those districts? What are the setbacks and the heights? So, answering kind of those three, first three questions of the district, what land uses are permitted and what the dimensional standards are. Then the middle to back of the L D O is more about the technical stuff, about design standards, landscaping, parking, building design, what the review steps are in the review process, whether someone's asking for something like a rezoning or some other kind, or a subdivision process, things of that nature, how non-conformities are treated, how enforcement works. Then, of course, definitions are the final thing. And this all is, has a few objectives that we hope to achieve with the L D O, aligning with your comprehensive plan and other policy documents you might have, enhancing the town neighborhood character and streamlining review to the extent that we can, that the law allows, that, and that ultimately Town Council feels comfortable with. Integrating in best practices. Our firm has been around since nineteen eighty-two. And during that time, we've kind of amassed a good amount of best practices that have worked certain places and that we can try in other places. We are trying to kind of balance predictability and certainty so that, on the one hand, an applicant knows what they're getting into when they apply for whatever they're applying for, again, or some kind of special permit, temporary use permit, signed permit, whatever the case may be. Balancing that predictability and certainty, but also having some flexibility in there so that our, there's the ability to kind of get approval within the, what the L D O allows and having a little flexibility in there so that, so that a person who's wanting to invest in Blythewood with a new development can have some certainty that if they follow what they're supposed to follow, go by all the standards, then approval is a little more likely. So, trying to be articulate and have legalese removed to the extent that we can and have as much of a readable L D O as, and understandable L D O as possible. The overall process here, we are sort of late middle, I would say, where we're getting ready to have a public review draft. We can also expect, as we get toward adoption and completion, an open house meeting where people can, from the general public especially, can learn more about the project and what it's, what the high points of the draft are, tracking toward a public hearing draft where it would then go through the public hearing process and ultimately, we hope, adoption of the L D O. Just to compare and contrast a little bit with your comprehensive plan versus your land development ordinance, think of the comprehensive plan as a menu while the L D O is a cookbook or a recipe. So, that the menu or the comprehensive plan sort of shows what you could have when you go out to eat somewhere. It's less information on the ingredients and how long things are cooked, but more like the pictures of what it looks like when it's done and a description. That's sort of what the comprehensive plan is like. It sets a vision for how the town wants to grow in the future. And then the L D O is the cookbook for how to get there. It's, you know, more specific and more detail-oriented than the comprehensive plan. Think of it as the ingredients needed for a certain recipe or kind of the standards, and then how long to cook and what you need to do are kind of the procedures to follow for approval. Just a lot more detail-oriented and technical than what the comprehensive plan is. Both are important, but both have different roles. What an L D O is, you're not starting from ground zero here, but, but in case others who may be listening in or in the audience aren't aware, an L D O consolidates the towns, most of the towns, if not all the towns, development-related laws and regulations into a single document, a single consolidated document. That helps to remove duplications and inconsistencies. If you had your subdivision standards in one document or one chapter of the town code and the zoning standards in another, and landscaping in another, then there's going to be, you can bet on there being inconsistencies and duplicated material, which can lead to inconsistencies. A good example of that is definitions, where the way that something like the word street is defined is almost always, when they're in separate documents, going to be different between the subdivision standards and the zoning ordinance. So, putting the, putting those together, getting rid of the inconsistencies and duplications, being a single source for the standards and procedures and definitions that relate to development of a property makes it easier for staff to interpret and administer and enforce. And we hope increases, you know, user-friendliness of the document for, whether it's laypersons or real estate professionals or, or other types of folks who kind of make a living on, on what the L D O says. So, some things that the L D O is not, it's not a property tax policy. It doesn't set a tax rate or set an assessed value on a property within the town. It's not annexation policy. It regulates areas that have been annexed, of course, and it gives kind of a default zoning district for annexed property, but it doesn't set out a schedule, the L D O does not, for annexing certain properties. It's not a capital improvements program, so it doesn't set a schedule or a budget for extending infrastructure or widening streets or things of that nature. It's not the building code. It doesn't restrict or regulate how many bathrooms a building needs to have or what its heating, ventilation, and air conditioning is like, or things like that that a building code would have bearing on. It's not construction standards either, so it's not, doesn't specify how thick the subbase or the base of a road is to be, or it doesn't get into curve-and-gutter measurements or manhole spacing and dimensions or things like that. The town or the county, through the town, through the county, they have rules like that, but it's not really in the L D O. Then finally, it's not property maintenance or nuisance regulations or a nuisance code. It doesn't force a landowner to maintain a vacant building and to keep it up. It would if the person, the landowner, were to propose to do something to change the property, like to bring a new use into an abandoned building or to expand the footprint of a abandoned building. Then they would have to come under different standards that would make the building, you know, be within the building code. But just a standing, property sitting there that the property owners are proposing to do anything with, this one, this, the L D O doesn't force them to bring it up to code, as people say. A few more background slides about what the land development can control as opposed to what it can't control, how land is used. So, various, you can have various land uses in close proximity to each other, as you see on the left there, or just a purely single-family residential-only type of development. And none of these images are from Blythewood. They're just sort of to get the point across. How much open space is set aside for new development? If there's a park there, they're in the center column versus no common open space, and L D O can have say on that. Density, how many dwelling units per acre, whether it's more like apartments that can be a higher density or a single-family development that could be a lower density. And again, when I say density, that's expressed in terms of dwelling units per acre, whether it's houses or apartment units or duplex units or whatever the case may be. An L D O also can regulate how tall buildings are and where they are on a property. So, some places, whether it's like if it's a downtown, would have varying building heights, but they're all sort of usually in a, in a typical downtown, kind of built close to the street compared to a more suburban setting where the heights are more consistent and they're built further back from the street typically. Couple of other things that an L D O can control, the minimum or maximum amounts of parking that's required based on what the land use is, whether it's a retail situation where it's based on the number of parking spaces per the square feet of floor area of the building, or something else like an oil change facility where the spaces are based on the base. You know, there can be a minimum, and as a trend is happening in a lot of places in the country, maximum parking standards. How the outside of buildings are designed, where it can vary from being boxy or not too appealing or interesting versus ones with buildings that have shapes and visual interest to them, whether it's, you know, awnings, second-story levels that have different materials compared to the base. Upper parts of the building, they're called the cap, where it's sort of looks even different than the base in the, in the central part of the building, just to give that visual interest and variety. Then one other thing, finally, that a L D O can have a say on is the amount of landscaping that's required, whether it's in the parking area or as buffer yards or as kind of general landscaped areas, can be a good amount or can be just a paved-over area. If a city or town's L D O doesn't say anything about landscaping, that's kind of rare, but sometimes they still do nowadays where there just aren't landscaping requirements. And so, a developer is going to do typically kind of what they're held to do by the rules. And so, if they aren't, if they didn't have landscaping in the regulations, then a lot of times they're not going to apply, provide them onsite. That's not a worry for Blythewood or anything. I'm just kind of trying to show the range that, of things that a L D O can address. Getting into more specific content now, there's ten chapters and appendix or appendices to the L D O. And I'm going to give just as quickly as I can, or as succinctly as I can, give a summary of each of these chapters so that you get an idea of the high points of the L D O. You'll very soon here have, you know, an actual, in writing to look at. So, this gives you a preview of what these chapters are going to have. And of course, I can't cover even the, I had to hit just the very high points for all of these chapters, just kind of in the interest of time. So, Chapter One, Purpose of Politability and Jurisdiction, is definitely one of the more mundane chapters of any L D O. It just lays out the purposes of the L D O, you know, the basics of health, safety, and welfare, but also related to economic development or environmental preservation, maintaining community character, things of that nature. It addresses how conflicts are dealt with, you know, if there's a conflict between the wording of a paragraph versus what a image, a graphic in the L D O shows, then it says that the written part controls over what the graphic shows. We don't want there to be conflicts, but just in case there are any, you know, then it shows how to address them. It gives the jurisdiction of the land development ordinance, which is, of course, the town of Blythewood. So, it sets out all of these things and more in that first chapter. Chapter Two, The Zoning Districts and Land Uses. And this one, this chapter establishes the different zoning districts that are based on the future land use categories of the comprehensive plan. So, there's a rural district that relates to the rural residential land use category. There's a suburban residential district that's proposed that relates to the low-density residential. And there's a semi-urban residential, which relates to the residential density flex in the future land use category. You'll also notice there that there is a column for development types. Those are the different ways that, and they're not different zoning districts. It's within each of the zoning districts, the kinds of development that can take place that are based kind of on the amount of open space set aside and the land uses that are allowed within them. And I've got a, the next slide will explain those development types a little better. Then the final column shows the most similar of your current, it says former, but, you know, you could say, think of it as your current zoning districts in your current regulations and how they relate to the proposed zoning districts. This gives a kind of conceptual view of what we mean by conventional cluster and planned development types. Some optional option, there is less open space set aside compared to cluster or planned, but at the same time, fewer units per acre, few, less density. In the cluster version, there's more open space set aside compared to conventional. But as a, as a reward for setting aside more open space, the developer gets more units per acre in exchange for setting more open space than what they would have been doing in the conventional option. So, it's a, it's a give and take. And then planned, the planned option is the same concept where open spa, more open space set aside equates to more units that they get out of the deal than if they hadn't set aside the open space. There's a lot of numbers, but just to try to give you a look at what it looks like in the code itself, within the suburban residential district, there's the three different development types that are available, conventional, cluster, or planned. And the thing to point out, and I can't, I don't know if my pointer shows up on the screen, but the open space column more on the right shows the amounts of, and when I say open space, I mean, I don't mean on an individual lot, but common open space that is shared within the development. That could be parkland or it could be just natural area set aside. There's a bunch of different options that it can be. As the open space requirement gets bigger, from twenty percent to thirty percent, for example, then the lot area gets smaller, so there's a more, again, units per acre that would come out of it compared to conventional. So, there's a little, very simple breakdown there at the bottom. A planned, the planned option in the suburban residential district gets three units per acre in exchange for that thirty percent open space set aside. And there's guidance and standards in the L D O that talk about what kind of open space it has to be, make sure it's usable, and it's not just a corner, an unseen kind of corner of the development that was going to be flooded anyway. There's some rules about that for the open space. This just lays out the remainder of the districts, suburban, commercial, auto, urban, commercial, town center, mixed-use, hospitality, heavy industrial, light industrial, office park, business campus. And they all, again, tie to the future land use categories of the comprehensive plan. There's also some special purpose and overlay district, architectural overlay district and planned development district. We would feel like this project was a success if, five years later, you see the use of planned developments. use of planned developments, um, uh, go down to where people are just able to use the base zoning districts and the rules of the LDO to, um, do the kinds of developments they want. Um, and, and you know, they're held to the, to the standards of the LDO instead of the more lengthy and open ended process that can be associated with, uh, planned developments. Um, so that's kind of the direction we're heading with the districts. The other big, after two is the use table. So, um, use table, this is, um, obviously like everything else, as I said, still in draft form, you can see some of the strike throughs underlines, excuse me, that are there. Um, but the use table sets out the abbreviations for if a use is permitted by right with a P, lim, uh, permitted with conditions with a C, which means that if they meet the standards, they don't have to go through a, uh, hearing, uh, uh, to get approval. They just administratively, through administrative, meet the standards and they're, um, they can be approved. And then permitted as a special exception, if there's an S. This particular excerpt of the table doesn't look like it has an S on it, but many of the uses in the use table have an S and that means passed through a public hearing in order to be approved. And then the dashes mean, um, that that land use is not approved in that particular district. So, um, uh, I'll just give an example here, within the office use category, which I'll talk about use categories in a moment, there's financial institution as an example. So, um, bank or, um, you know, investment office or things of that nature have, um, are permitted in certain districts with a P. We've also, um, I believe this is in your existing regulations, the NA, NAICS codes that get, that are very, um, uh, kind of technical, but give the, um, give a, a sign, a, a number that has a meaning to it, to each of these, um, uh, specific land uses. Within each use category, which in this example is offices, there are, um, several, uh, land, specific land uses that are set out and given a pattern of whether they're permitted, uh, or not in the different zoning districts that make up the columns here. Um, and again, this financial off institution is one of those. Um, and then anything that's not listed above, so any office that is not a contractor's office without our outdoor storage, contractor's office with outdoor storage or financial institution, any other kind of office, get all, um, grouped into this one row as a sort of efficient way to make your use tape shorter and just kind of handle all your land uses, uh, or not all of them, but many of them within that office use category, just on one row, instead of being kind of micromanaging land uses that are really very similar to one another. Um, so that's sort of an overview of the, um, use table. A few more things to say about the use table before we move on. Um, and I guess I basically explained that in the previous slide about the all other office uses there, um, and the permissions based on the zoning district. That final column on the right says specific standards and that is a link. When someone's using the adopted version of this, um, LDO, they'll be able to click on that link there, 2.04.04. And if, instead of, if they had a paper copy, they have to page through and find that location. They click on that and it takes them right to that standard for contractor's office with outdoor storage. Um, takes them to that and they can see what standards relate, um, to that in order to get the approval for the conditional use. Um, that's, uh, we found that to be a helpful tool that, um, a lot of, um, users like when they're using the, um, uh, an LDO like this. Um, I was going to say one other, um, oh, it is printable also, um, even though it's kind of meant to be looked at online and used, um, uh, the, the internet is the LDO's native format, as we say, um, it can still be printed if someone were, um, wanting to use it that way, or converted to a PDF, um, and used that way. So each of the use categories have their own, um, table, uh, where the specific uses are spelled out, because if I go back one, let me go back one slide, someone could look at this and say, okay, all other office uses. Well, what are all the other office land uses? They can go to the office use category and see what we mean by that. We've got all the different varieties of office uses listed out. Um, and that again makes the use table a lot more compact and, um, we hope easier to, um, uh, read through and see what is allowed. The other column here, um, in the office or in all of the use categories describes the accessory uses that go along with, um, in this case, the office use category. So, um, things you would kind of expect, um, in a, in an office setting, whether it's, um, you know, a small retail area, if a, if a, um, it's a good example, if a, um, uh, let's see here, sorry, I had to pull from a, pull from the list here. Um, well, in any case, if there were an office that had, um, some kind of small retail area where they were selling office supplies or something like that, or if they, um, had, um, some more, uh, obvious ones, like if there was a childcare center, it's not a true childcare center, it's for, you know, the employees of that office. They might have a area for people to bring their kids, a daycare area for people to bring their kids when they're, you know, working as a convenience. So just setting out what those typical accessory uses are for each of the use categories. And each one has a different listing of accessory uses. One more slide, I think for chapter two, zoning districts and land uses, just wanted to point out, we should, we have different standards for accessory uses and structures. Um, so there's kind of general standards that apply to all, um, accessory uses, but then we also have specific standards for accessory uses and structures like pools or home occupations, short-term rentals, accessory dwelling units. Um, and then we also have temporary use, um, standards and that's, um, that table is an excerpt of the temporary use standards table where we show, um, the district that different temporary uses are allowed in. Um, how many days, uh, per year, um, uh, they're allowed to operate, um, and how many, um, days, or how many events per year and how many days per event, um, that, uh, a given temporary use is, um, allowed to, um, operate and what district they're allowed in as well. And just like with the accessory uses, there's a, a set of temporary use, um, standards that are in this chapter two. So now, um, uh, moving on to chapter three, building and site design. Each of these slides, I'm just trying to compress the contents of each section that you see on the left, um, into one slide, which is, you know, kind of an undertaking to compress everything down, but, um, gives you an idea of some of the highlights, like I said. Um, applicability and purposes lays out the purpose statements for each of those little sections there, site design, parking, trees, signs, et cetera. And also applicability, and there's a table here, um, that shows basically if you're doing a brand new development on the top row, new residential, non-residential and mixed use development, or changing in use from a residential to a non-residential use, then all the standards apply, whether it's building design, parking, trees, signs, outdoor lighting, everything applies. Um, if it's a smaller change, like you're only changing, um, uh, and the, the table goes on, just the excerpt, um, cuts off, of course. Um, if you're doing a smaller change, like only, um, changing the sign, then of course only the sign standards, um, uh, apply to something like that. Or if you're only, um, changing, as an example that's on the screen here, changing, uh, a use, um, that needs 10 or more additional parking, loading, uh, or stacking spaces, then the parking standards apply, trees landscaping and buffering apply and lighting applies, but the building design and sign standards don't. So, um, smaller changes equate to less need for complying with everything, while bigger changes to a site like a brand new development or completely changing the use equates to more compliance with more of the, the sections of this chapter. Um, site design is the next one. And one of the things to point out that's, uh, brand new and that is, um, uh, something that is, um, a, a, a topic in zoning, uh, work among people who do stuff like this for a living, is a sustainability table, sustainability incentives table, where if a person, a development works in certain things like solar panels or geothermal, uh, energy, skylights, um, other things like that, green roofs, which are, you know, roofs that can support, um, plantings or white roofs, which are roofs that reflect heat off of them, um, things like that, that are, that help to save energy or to, um, to provide more greenery, then if they do that, um, uh, and do enough of that type of improvements, then they can get certain, um, bonuses or reductions that you see there on the lower right. So, um, if they do enough of them, then they could get an modest density bonus, height bonus, they could have a little more lot coverage than what they normally would have been allowed to have. They could reduce their parking that they're required to provide. They could have, um, a, a bonus to the amount of sign area that they normally would be able to have. So those things are trade-offs, sort of like with the open space and the density that I talked about earlier. Do some of these things, um, that are, that are, um, good for the environment or sustainability and you get, um, a bit of a bonus, um, uh, for density or height or other things like Parking, loading, stacking and access is, um, the next section. Uh, we've worked in, um, parking spaces, so it's very normal for places, cities and towns and counties to have a minimum amount of parking to provide, um, but also now it's becoming more commonplace and the best practice is, um, have maximum parking, uh, as always. So setting a cap on how much paved area a land use can, um, have. There's some flexibility in there, um, and there's, um, routes to be provided more, uh, maximum, but, um, setting that in place and just, um, uh, having that maximum is, is something that's a, a new part of the LDO. There are restrictions related to RVs and campers and commercial vehicles. Um, loading is required to be screened. There's a little image there on the lower right of, um, one option for training, loading, um, so that it's not as obtrusive on neighboring properties. There are stacking requirements, stacking is, you know, like at a, um, Spex or a McDonald's, um, the amount of cars that, um, stacked up at the, uh, place where you order and then at the place where you pick up your, pick up your order, um, so that you prevent, um, cars from, uh, spilling out onto the public street and causing hazards or, um, accidents. So stacking, um, requirements there and there are driveway standards related to driveway width, driveway spacing, um, and other aspects like that. Trees landscaping and buffering, um, has, uh, each zoning district has a, um, uh, that we looked at earlier, the different zoning districts has a landscape ratio percentage. So a certain percentage of the site has to have landscaping on it and there are various ways to accomplish and, and achieve that percentage, um, whether it's through buffering or, um, parking lot landscaping or general kind of site landscaping. Um, there's also heritage tree preservation requirements, um, in that section. Um, provisions for, um, requiring parking lot landscaping, which has, you know, many benefits, um, heat island reduction and the heat island effect, giving some, uh, area for stormwater to seep back into the ground without going, you know, onto the, um, street, uh, through, through drainage channels. Um, the buffering requirements again are variable, so that if there are two kind of similar but different zoning districts that are adjacent to each other, then, um, a narrower and less planted buffer yard is required between them. But if there's a, a, two zoning districts with drastic differences between them, like if there were to be the, the business park, um, district next to a single family residential district and the business park developed that property, they would have to provide a much more significant buffer than it was if it was only like neighborhood commercial coming in next door. So there's, um, various widths, various amounts of plantings based on the difference between the two different zoning districts that affect each other. There's also provisions for alternative compliance, as kind of I mentioned earlier with the predictability, but flexibility, um, where, um, it's the, uh, a design, landscaping design can be approved if they, um, uh, based on review, of course, by staff, if they, um, show where they're meeting the kind of purpose and intent of the landscaping, uh, and treaty and buffering, uh, requirements, but don't exactly meet the letter of the regulations. Um, uh, so that's a, an, an option that's built into the regulations as well. So signs, we have standards for various types of signs, whether they're exempt from regulation, like a, a sign put up by the town, like a, a public notice sign comes to mind as one that would be exempt from regulation versus permanent signs and temporary signs. Um, we also have prohibited sign types and materials in certain locations where signs are prohibited. But that, the main thing that sign standards nowadays need to have is that they be content neutral, um, that they comply with a Supreme Court decision from a while back that says you can't, a, a city or town can't regulate signs based on what they say or what their purpose is, um, that they have to sort of, instead of saying real estate sign or apartment sign or, um, something like that, it has to be monument sign, um, or, uh, H-frame sign, uh, things like that, that, that use the terms that are related to how the sign is structured versus what the, um, purpose of the sign is or what it says. For outdoor lighting, we require a fully cut off, um, fixtures that don't, um, shoot up into the sky, um, and also require that light can't trap trespass onto, um, adjacent properties or streets, you know, and cause glare and, um, potentially other unsafe conditions. Chapter three, there's public, um, section that applies to, um, developments that are a little bigger, that, um, are non-residential or mixed use and have 15,000, uh, or more square feet of gross floor area. There, um, has to be, um, a contribution either in, uh, of actual public art, um, or a, a sort of fee in lieu of the contribution where, um, the value of the art is 50% or, sorry, 50 cents per square foot of gross floor area. Um, the property owner will be required to maintain and then, um, you know, the director slash administrator can refer, um, any part of that, um, section, uh, whether it's the design or whatever the case may be, to town council if there's some uncertainty on, on, um, what is, uh, being proposed for the public art for the development. Chapter four is subdivision standards. The main section to point out that has any kind of, um, that could have any sort of interest for most people, I would say, is the subdivision design standard. So these are technical standards for facilities like streets, um, easements, sidewalks, water waste, water drainage, um, standards related to all of those things that when someone submits a, a plat for review, then the, you know, the plat, uh, has to comply with. There's right of way widths, which is obviously, you know, or not obviously, but of course the, the, the ground of the, that a street sits on top of, um, it's not necessarily the paved width of the street, but it's the area also to the side of the street. Um, right of way widths, pavement widths, um, rules for street names and street lights and street signs, um, how sidewalks are installed and what their widths are, um, the rules for extension of water and wastewater facilities also round out, um, that section in chapter four. For chapter five, environmental management, this is mostly floodplain and floodway provisions, um, uh, laying out standards within, um, FEMA designated floodplains to minimize damage and, uh, to property and losses due to flood conditions. And this is, um, very much a carryover of what your current, um, flood provisions contain. Chapter six is administration. This sets out the different review bodies, whether they are, um, groups of people that are elected or appointed, like you all, um, so town council, planning commission, board of zoning appeals, board of architectural review, board of historic preservation, or if they are staff members or administrative, uh, people, the technical review committee, the, uh, planning directors, sometimes we call it the administrator, building official, town engineer, floodplain administrator, sets those out and gives any kind of special rules. Of course, they have to, um, you know, make recommendations and take final actions on different, um, review, uh, development applications that are in the LDO. Um, but they also sometimes have some special things that need to be laid out and, um, established within the LDO. Chapter seven, review procedures. The main thing to point out, um, in this chapter is the The main thing to point out in this chapter is the summary of procedures. There's an excerpt there on the screen where different development applications are on the left. Then next to that is the timing of the submittal of that application. Next to that is the expiration column, which shows if nothing were done, like if someone, you can see at the bottom of the table, a variance. If someone successfully has granted a variance and they don't do anything on the property, they don't do what they were asking for the variance for, for whatever reason, then it expires in 12 months. The approval expires in 12 months. If they wanted to do it again, or if they wanted to do the actual, you know, construction or whatever, that was the subject of the variance, then they would have to apply again and go through the hearing process again. It shows who makes the recommendation on the request. In that case, for variance, the planning director, who takes final action, the BZA does, and then what kind of public notice is needed, whether it's published in a newspaper, posted or mailed. And then one column that's not on there is that there's a reference to standards that relate to that type of development application. So a good example of that is for, and it doesn't show up on the excerpt, but for a sign permit, then, you know, you have to follow the sign standards, of course, in order to get the sign permit. So there's a link to the, the, the application and the standards that relate to getting that approval of that application. Few more slides here. We're on chapter eight, nonconformities, setting out the standards and rules for nonconforming uses, buildings, lots, development standards like parking or landscaping and then signs or billboards. So different rules for those different types of nonconforming things, nonconformities. A nonconforming... We've all been here, haven't we? Meeting is being recorded. Okay, I'm gonna hang up now and keep going. Okay. Sorry for that technical issue. You only missed one slide. I was just talking about nonconformities and explaining the rules related to them, which are, nonconformities are things that were legally established, whether it's a house or a structure, a land use, a lot, a, you know, a landscape design or a sign, any of those things that were legally established and met the rules at one time, but for whatever reason no longer comply with the LDO. And we just say, like many other land, uh, nonconforming provisions, say, all over the country, you know, they can't, they, they can continue to exist or be in business or function as a house and be lived in, but they just can't be like expanded upon or if it's a business become more intense or, you know, the parking lot can't be added on to. And, and if it's a nonconforming use, it can't change to another nonconforming use. If it's a, a nonconforming use, it has, if it's gonna change uses, like if the thing goes out of business, then the new business that comes in has to meet, you know, the allowed land uses within that zoning district. So that was basically what I was saying about chapter eight. And then I moved on to chapter nine. And there are just a few more, just one, two more chapters to go over. Enforcement and remedies, where we talk about what, what are violations, what violations consist of for the LDO. We say that violations continue under the old LDO. If you had a violation from the, the previous LDO and it's still, you know, if it's still something that is not allowed, then that continues. Or even if it is allowed, you know, they put a, they put kind of a stop on it and the violation still exists, but you don't keep getting, you know, charged or whatever with each offense. Getting a little into the weeds maybe, but it lays out what, what constitutes a violation, like I said, lists out the different notification requirements that someone with a violating building or land use would receive. It also provides the nonjudicial remedy. So that's things that town sort of staff can do before having to go to court. And most towns and cities that I'm, am aware of and that I've worked with really just want to have compliance. They don't know, they aren't interested in going to court or getting fees usually or anything like that. It's, they just, you know, want the property to meet the regulations one way or another. And one thing that, that the town can do is withhold permits on the property, other than permits that are needed to fix the violation. They can also do stop work orders if there's some kind of construction activity that's taking place that is violating the LDO, then they can do that as well. And ultimately, if they need to, can also, you know, go to, to court on a violation. But that's often, in my experience, the last resort for what, what the town or city wants to do. Then the final chapter of the, is rules of construction, acronyms and abbreviations. And rules of construction means it's sort of what, what we mean when we say shall versus may and what and in a list of conditions means versus or. It talks about, you know, what, when we say days, so we don't always have to repeat it and say blah, 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 must happen so many calendar days after such and such. We can just say the word days and, and this section clarifies that when we say days, we mean calendar days as opposed to business days. Or another one is the director or the administrator shall fill in the blank. We don't have to constantly repeat or his or her designate because we say it once here that we say, in the body of the LDO, if we say the town engineer or the administrator, then it's assumed that their designate also is included in that. So it's not as if, you know, one person is running around doing all these different things. They've got staff members to assist with enforcement or inspection or plan review or things of that nature. We, as I mentioned at the very beginning, removed duplicative or duplicating definitions. Another example of that was accessory structure. There were two definitions for that. For the word lot, there were two definitions. So going through and either combining them or taking the best of the, the better of the two and, and keeping it and striking the other. And then we also added several new definitions as needed, whether it's related to land use or other, you know, technical terms like that. So that was the, the last slide of content. As Daniel has mentioned, this will be, I, I intend to provide Daniel with the draft of the LDO that can be sort of more of a public review draft very soon here. And you will see sort of in writing the concepts we've talked about. So at this point, I would offer up, answer any questions or comments that anyone might have?
Thank you, Brian. Does anybody have any specific questions for what we've seen so far? I gather everybody's probably put two and two together at this point, but really the intent of this was to really give a good overview of how to look at and use the LDO so that when you have your own time at home and as we're going through this public review, it makes sense on what you're looking at for, and shows how some of the old versus the new. So, but does the planning commission members, anybody having any questions for what Brian has went through?
While people are thinking, if, if, if anything, I was gonna throw, I didn't mention this, Daniel, I hope it's, okay, I was gonna show just briefly that, what it will look like and give a little demonstration on commenting, if that's okay?
Sure.
So this is the, what you, when you receive, when you're, when it's sort of released, you'll be given a link to review the document and, you know, it's still got a lot of strike through that line in it, but I'll go to a section that has, it's a little more interesting to look at with the, with graphics and things like that. This is the landscaping section. As you can see, it has several graphics, subtracted an underline of what's new. And one feature that many, that's kind of helpful, I think, for people is the definitions. If you hover over, let me try to find a good one. So site plan or open space here, when I hover over different words, the definitions of those words pop up there based on the, you know, the definitions that are actually there at the, the back of the document is one thing. And then one other that I'll, and then I'll stop sharing or stop with this view. If you click on a cross-reference like the landscape surface ratio established and 2.02, 2.02, if someone clicks on that, then it takes them to that section so they can then review what. So just wanted to show a little demonstration of what it will look like. And we also have a video, one more thing, have a video on how to comment. If you click that, or it's not a video, it's kind of written out instructions on how to comment on the draft when you, when you get it. So just wanted to put that out there as one more, one more thing you can look forward to.
Thanks, Brian. Gathering in the room here, everybody's pretty good on that. We appreciate your time and, and updates and I've got all the information to share with this, so we'll, we'll be putting that out and, and I'll be, when you have the draft ready, send it and we'll get it all geared up.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Daniel, and thank you all to the elected and appointed officials for letting me talk to you for a minute. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Brian.
Bye-bye.
Wow, there's an awful lot of information there and just from my own perspective, the, the comment I would make is that this is probably the most important ordinance that, that the town has. And the, the consultant that we used in conjunction with Daniel and the staff, they've gone through every single sentence and clause of our existing ordinance, which is no big task in itself. It covers a huge amount of information and detail. And what, what we have here is the, the best of everything that we had and added to that to fill in any gaps of uncertainty or, or confusion or contradiction, plus improving the layout, the presentation and the illustrations. So in, in my opinion, we, we have a, a really excellent basis for moving forward, excuse me, which will be a lot clearer and easier to understand and, and navigate through. But the whole purpose of this evening is to make everyone aware of this new document and to give you the opportunity to browse it, look at those areas of interest to you and provide feedback so that we can make any additional adjustments, improvements or additions. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add? Otherwise, I think it's, it was well worth the wait. So with that being said, if no one has any comments, no one's signed up to, to write, to, to make a comment, we can move on with the rest of the agenda. Tom?
Yeah, so obviously y'all that are on zoning appeals, planning commission, architectural review and council have all been getting emails with the various links and the tutorials leading up to this. I anticipate getting the draft ordinance from Brian this week and us getting it up this week at the latest, the first of next week. And we will be putting a social media campaign together and sharing that information. And we probably will run at least one notice in the local paper just to make sure we meet all compliances in the letter of the law. And so we'll have that up and going here real soon.
Anyone else? Great, okay. Then we'll move on to item three of the agenda. We have two simple action items this evening. The first one is discussion and consideration of approving a road name change for Scout Motors Drive. Do we have anyone to speak to that, represent that?
I can give you some background on it.
If you could.
So essentially, just as it is in the title, we had a, received a road name change application for, from Richland County. It's related to community road, changing a portion of to Scout Motors Drive. And in your packets, you've got a memo and as well a map. And then for those in the audience, I pulled this up. in the audience, I pulled this up. And essentially, to the north here is Blythewood Road, and this here is existing community road. And then this area in here is the intersection not to be, not, that has not been constructed yet, or to be constructed. And this will be the new overpass and a new road built over that connects to Highway 21. And then, of course, to the south, you have a remainder of community road that'll come down here. So from Wilson on the south end, you'll turn on to community road, just as you do today, and then you'll drive up to the intersection and new light that'll be in the future. And at that point, you could turn a right on to Scout Motors' Drive, or you could turn left and continue up Scout Motors' Drive into Blythewood Road. So the part to be renamed, or the proposed to be renamed, is approximately 1.7 miles. And the remainder, I believe, is about three miles or so left of community road. But the total is about three and a half miles for the whole Scout Motors' Drive, when the new interchange is put in, and the connector over to Wilson. For this town of Blythewood, there's not a lot of parameters around a road name change in our current ordinance. So really, you have the, the South Carolina Planning Enabling Act to guide you. And essentially, item number three would be the justification, and this cause would be upon any and other, and any other good and just reason that the planning commission may see for the road name change. So...
Thank you, Daniel. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
I have a question. Is there any historical significance to community road having its original name?
Not that I'm aware of, or that's been brought to any of our attention. I know it's been named that for a long while. I don't think it has any historical context in the name itself.
All right.
I have a question. I actually drove down there today. I only saw one mailbox, which is the public storage facility. They would be the only one impacted by the name change?
Yeah, the other parcels are vacant. And so the public storage would be the only current impacted in terms of address changing, or something of that nature. I don't believe anybody from public storage is here.
There'd be a public notification process?
There has been a public, yeah, it's been posted, both with signage, as well articles in the newspaper and social media. So it's, in my opinion, been well advertised. Staff's not received any comment.
So commissioners, it's for us to move a motion in favor of this name change. So do I hear a motion to that effect? We have a motion from Mr. Taylor, and a second from Mr. Mosley. Any further discussion? All in favor, then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your ayes have it. And let's, let's say that the commission recommends we go ahead with that name change within the remit of our authority as a planning commission.
Sounds good.
Now, the second item, which may be somewhat related to it, is a zoning map amendment to change light industrial to a light industrial research park for a subdivision portion of the Scout site. Is it, I couldn't quite make it out, but somewhere in that same area of the southeast portion of the site?
It is. It'll be, so I'll give you a little background. So the entire site of Scout was rezoned, as many of you are aware, to the LI2, what it currently is, and in the developments of Scout, and then also in the not knowings of everything in the early days of the development. It has since then been decided there's gonna be a training facility put on the site to train the employees who will actually work there. It's my understanding, this training facility, it'd either be one of three, or one of four in the entire state for trades, training in specific automotive industry mechanics, and also how to work all the machinery and all that stuff. In order to do that, the LI2 doesn't allow that. It needs to be something that addresses the educational component, which would thus be the research park portion of it. So the simplest would be to subdivide out the five, the other part is, they're subdividing out the 5.68 acres because it will actually be a public facility. So it's gonna be owned by the state or Midlands Technical College. And the road portion of, from what will be the future of Scout Motors' Drive to this facility, will actually be a, have a deed to deasement to the town of Blythewood, to be maintained as a community road as well, or a public access road. So everything related to this rezoning is to make it accessible to the public and enable them to build the research park by having the rezon. So the subdivide would come after the rezone approval because we obviously wouldn't subdivide something that we don't know if the rezoning's not complete.
So again, commissioners, we need a motion to approve the zoning change?
I make a motion to approve the, well, recommendation for zoning change of the 5.68 acres.
Second.
You have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
Just one quick question. So with us taking 5.68 acres and making it a training site for the most part, are there any environmental considerations now that we're gonna be doing training in that area? That's the only, that's really the only concern I have. Is this area still gonna be where we can trust that the training that's gonna be done is gonna leave a clean environment for us, and it's not gonna risk any other environmental factors in our area? That's the only question I have.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to comply with the same environmental regulations as the entire park. In fact, it'll be a completely new submittal and new SWIP plan, and everything will be put in place for this individual parcel for them to build and also to maintain it. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. No further questions from my side.
Thank you. So we have a motion. We have a second?
I second.
We did the final questioning, so we're back to voting. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. And this will be a recommendation to cancel for rezoning?
No, this is done, this is one and done here.
This is one and done. Perfect. Very good. So item four, open citizens' comment. Do we have anybody signing up, or is anybody here wish to speak on anything? Otherwise, hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you all very much, indeed. Thank you.